Hafedeh and good morning. This virtual public hearing conducted by the Committee on Economic Development, Agriculture, Power, and Energy Utilities and the Arts is called to order. It is 9:02 a.m. Notice of the hearing was disseminated to all local media outlets on April 25th of 2022 with the second notice provided on April 30th of 2022. Notice of the hearing was also made known on the Guam Legislature's website. This morning, the committee will hear testimony on Bill Number 231-36 LS, an act to amend section 58202 and 58203 of Article 2, Chapter 58, Title 12, Guam Code Annotated, relative to amending the special qualifying certificate for hotel room development to include renovations introduced by Senator James Moylan, Vice Speaker Tina Rose Munya Barnes, Senators Joe Sinagastin, Christopher Duennius, and Tony Ada. Upon conclusion of Bill Number 231-36 LS, we'll take a five-minute recess before we hear testimony on Bill Number 259-36 LS. I would now like to welcome my colleagues who are joining us today, beginning with Senator Amanda Shelton, Senator Jim Moylan, Senator Sabina Perez, and Senator Telo Taregui. And we will begin with discussions on Bill Number 231-36 LS. And Senator Joanne Brown has joined us this morning as well. We begin with Senator Moylan to present his statement on Bill Number 231-36 LS. Senator Moylan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, colleagues, for joining us here today and to our panel for coming for the discussion on Bill 231-36, as introduced by myself. And I want to thank my co-sponsors, Vice Speaker Tina Rose Munya Barnes, Senator Joe Sinagastin, Senator Chris Duennius, and Senator Anthony Ada. As mentioned, this bill is basically to amend sections in the current law relative to amending the special qualifying certificate for hotel room development and specifically to include renovations. As we know, the qualifying certificate program is vital to our Guam economy because it does economic development. And specifically for the economic development we're discussing with 231-36 is regarding the renovation of existing hotel rooms. And this time more than ever, this is a good time to address this measure. As we previously done, we extended the QC program for new hotel rooms to be built and attract investors to come to Guam. And with this measure, we want to include not only the expansion of hotel rooms, but let's also include renovations of hotel rooms, which was previously discussed with our agency GITA, who is actually would be in charge of this program as it moves forward. It's considered time-sensitive because we're at a period where for tourism and due to COVID of having this time to renovate our existing hotel rooms. So as the COVID, we're passing through it successfully, we're expecting our tourists to return. And when they'd return to Guam, we're hoping that they will experience some bright new hotel rooms and renovated and updated. And we're trying to attract a good group of tourists, and of course, they're all are good, but we're looking for these tourists that have a wonderful experience. And this will be helpful to move forward while we have this opportunity to do so. And we also know that there's, construction is limited on Guam and it's hard to get by because of the lack of workers, right? The lack of skilled labor to construct or renovate hotel rooms. And then there's the cost of equipment. There's the cost of labor. There's the cost of building material. There's the cost of fuel. There are so many things that are involved with this that continue to increase. So how do we incentivize our existing hotel rooms to renovate and make our product even more attractive for our tourists to return to Guam? And that's why this economic development QC is for that purpose. It's about creating new jobs, creating a good product, and to creating that experience for our tourists when they do return to Guam to be good and that they continue to return as well. With this QC program, we're not giving away the kitchen sink. We are balancing it to ensure that the taxes are still being paid, services are still being provided, and we're generating the general fund by creating jobs, by buying local material. And so it's an economic development purpose for this bill, and it's a good time to do it. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I thank you again for my colleagues for participating, and I thank you for the panel for being here. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Senator Moylan. I'd like to also recognize Senator Chris Duennius. And now we will hear testimony from those who've joined us today. I will call on participants based on how their names appear in the sign-in sheet, beginning with Mr. Matthew Baza from GITA.
Hafedeh, good morning, senators. My name is Matthew Baza. I'm the Business and Economic Development Supervisor at GITA, and I'll actually defer to our CEO Mel to provide the testimony, her bits and testimony. Thank you.
Please proceed.
Hafedeh, good morning. Hafedeh, good morning. Senator Rogel, members of the Committee on Economic Development, Agriculture, Power, Energy Utilities, and the Arts, and thank you for the opportunity to provide testimony on Bill 231-36. My name is Melanie Mendiola, and I'm the Administrator/CEO of the Guam Economic Development Authority. GITA wholeheartedly supports the bill and the enhancements it aims to include in the special hotel qualifying certificate QC program. Last year, GITA consulted with various industry stakeholders regarding the special hotel QC program. The enhancements contained in Bill 231 is based on input provided to GITA from these stakeholders and are aimed at promoting economic recovery and the revitalization of the local tourism industry. Bill 231 authorizes more robust tax incentives for existing hotel operators to substantially renovate and/or expand their existing hotel properties. Through this program, we hope to encourage additional investment to existing rooms and facilities, which will improve the quality of Guam's hotel room inventory while also promoting more modern and efficient hotel operations. This in turn will greatly increase the overall quality of Guam as a visitor destination, which will attract a higher-yield visitor while simultaneously ensuring Guam stays at the forefront of a highly competitive regional tourism market. As Guam continues to make tremendous strides with regard to the COVID-19 public health recovery, GITA is confident that Guam's economic recovery will be swift. Bill 231's goal to increase investment in our hotel facilities sends a clear sign to international visitors that Guam's visitor industry is gearing up for the return of a robust and prosperous tourism industry. As such, GITA respectfully urges the passage of 231-36. Thank you for your time and attention to this, and of course, if you have any questions, I'm available here to you as well as our Business and Industry Development Supervisor, Mr. Baza, who has probably the most active involvement in this, in the program. Thank you very much.
Thank you for that, Ms. Mendiola. And with that, I will open it up to my colleagues on the panel this morning to ask questions, beginning to my far left with Senator Duennius.
Mr. Monsi, I'm Mr. Chairman. May I defer to the author? I just wouldn't like to respect his arrival early.
Sure. Thank you. Senator Moylan?
Thank you, Senator Duennius. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Baza, so you heard the testimony from our CEO here on opening supporting statements. And you mentioned that you expand your job there at GITA is basically the expansion of the business development side. Could you explain to us, if this bill moves forward, how this would expand? How would you promote this new incentive if the bill moves forward and passes into the law? How would this help you do your job?
Thank you for the question. I think, of course, Ed Camacho, the Business Development Manager, was, is also heavily involved in the marketing aspect of all of our tax incentive programs, as this, as of course, our Administrator/CEO. This is a program, this bill basically enhances the tax incentive program for existing hotel properties. So of course, one of the first things that would happen is, if the bill were to become law, would be to let, through GHRA, through GVB, or even just directly let our existing hotel operators know that, hey, this increased tax incentive is available for you guys if you are looking to make an investment or if there's a potential for you to reinvest in your property. This may be incentive for you to put even more into your property because it would assist you in your return on investment once all the renovations and adjustments are made. This is also would be available to them to say, hey, if an existing hotel operator is seeking new outside investment, either from other people on Guam or internationally or nationally, to say, hey, you know, there's a tax incentive program that really incentivizes people coming in and investing in our properties. So of course, because this is for existing operators, the first people we reach out to would be the people who currently own and operate all the hotels in Tumana and around Guam.
A statement made earlier that you had discussions with stakeholders. Has this been an interest with the stakeholders regarding renovation QC for their existing hotels?
Yes. So I know that my manager's been more active in those conversations, but I do know that this program does provide an enhanced incentive for them that would really make them, I think, Joe, this is just me speaking based on what I see, taking a more serious look at incentive, investing in their properties above and beyond sort of the standard, you know, general maintenance or regular improvements because of the enhanced incentive.
What's your opinion of the tax incentive included in the bill? Is this, does it seem fair, or do you see any changes necessary? How do you think the percentages are that was written as proposed in this bill?
I think on that question, I would defer to the Administrator.
Thank you, Senator, and thank you. Thank you, Matt. With regard to the level of benefits, so earlier you had asked about consulting the stakeholders. So one thing to recall is that GITA plays by and large an administrative role in carrying out all of these programs. But the influence of what makes for a competitive program oftentimes comes organically from an industry such as the tourism industry. So in this regard, this was the input that was provided from the Guam Visitors Bureau in addition to the stakeholders with whom they met. But one way to look at how competitive our program is relative to other programs is to really look at what's out there competitively in the region. And so if you look outward, for example, and I'm sorry, let me refer to my phone for the notes, but if you look outward, in Guam, we have hotels that have brands similar to brands that you'll find all over the region, including the Hyatt, the Hyatt, the Hilton, et cetera. And so what would make a Hyatt, what would make a corporation decide to invest in Guam as opposed to invest in their property in Thailand or invest in their property in Malaysia or another location? And of course, the return of investment is number one, right, for them. So what we did is we started to look at what is available, sort of regionally. In Thailand, they give a 150% deduction on your taxes for whatever is spent. So for example, if you have a property that's valued at $100 million, and you spend $50 million on a renovation, they'll give you $75 million in tax rebates that you can utilize over the course of a number of years. Malaysia, it's a very similar situation. 70% of your expenditure, you can utilize and apply towards your taxes over the number of years. Here in Guam, what we're offering is 10% of, it's 20% of what you, I'm sorry, it's 10% in order to qualify. So if your hotel is valued at $100 million, your renovation must be valued at at least $10 million. And so if you utilize that minimum $10 million, the actual amount that you would get in a tax rebate or tax abatement would be $2 million. That's correct, right? Okay. Would be $2 million as this bill is presented. If that same property owner, if the Hyatt National decides to, or International decides to go to Thailand, that $10 million renovation would garner them a $15 million tax credit. And that same renovation in Malaysia would get them a $7 million tax credit. So we find that ours is lower, but at the same time, there's many other reasons why they might choose to develop in Guam, just the makeup of our market, being U.S. soil, are diversified tourism-based. So we'd like to be able to offer something, but it doesn't have to be the clear-cut winner. We don't have to give away the farm here. But we do believe that having something available, which is fair, and which is fair and encourages reinvestment into our island, is something that is generally a good idea from the perspective of marketing. When we go out there, we have something to say. We have something to promote. No, we don't have the best in show when it comes to the tax incentives, but there's a lot of other reasons why you might choose Guam over Thailand, over Malaysia. And so that's what we believe to be the competitive advantage of having an incentive like this in place.
Thank you for that. Can you also expand on how this with the QC for the renovations, what jobs do you see created during these renovations? And how would this economic impact help trickle down to the economy?
Sure. Thank you, Senator, for that question. One of the, one of the, one of the things that I've already observed in the tourism industry is there have been a number of properties who have already taken their properties offline for a visual refresh, so to make their hotel rooms a little bit brighter, a little bit better. But what this would encourage, I believe, is serious consideration into things like becoming more efficient. We all see our power bills going up. You know that it's the same thing for our hotels. If our hotels were to look at installing a solar program or an energy efficiency program, better, more efficient appliances, HVAC, AC, that sort of thing, that all, all of those changes are costly, but those are not changes that are observed by the naked eye of the visitor, right? And so they may not be the first thing that they look to, but at the same time, it's a great time when you say, as a hotel developer, you say, hey, or a hotel owner, you say, hey, your power bill's going up. At the same time, there's this thing in place. At the same time, this is really good for a long-term sustainable footprint on the island, right? And so that's our, that's what we can see. And then the byproduct of that is we still have a relatively young private sector space in the renewable energy space. So I can certainly see jobs expanding in that regard, in addition, of course, to the usuals like construction and, construction and other types of trades.
Thank you. Also in your testimony, you mentioned a higher yield of visitors. Expand on that for me, please.
Certainly. I would, if my colleagues from GVB were here, I would certainly defer to them to answer this a little bit more articulately than I can. But one thing that strategically, I believe, GVB has been going after over the last several years, is getting a tourist where a higher proportion of their income stays in Guam and stays in Guam for a longer period of time. And so what was happening at the outset of the tourism industry, you had these package operators where you stay at a Japanese-owned hotel, you buy a Japanese package, you're transported by, you know, a Japanese transportation company, and the amount of money, the amount of money that would stay in Guam would be smaller. Now you have a lot more independent visitors. They book their own travel. They book their own excursions. They stay for as long as they want. And generally, those result in a higher yield to our island. Many of those travelers, they want to stay at hotels that offer modern amenities. They want to stay at hotels that offer a refreshed experience. They don't want a hotel that looks like it was, the last time it was updated was 1989. And so that has been, I know that GVB has made a concerted effort to go after a higher yield, higher spending, number one, but also a higher spending, but also a more superior product offering, meaning we're offering them best-in-class as opposed to a discount product.
Thank you. So the hotel industry, at one point prior to the pandemic, we were on an uphill, right? We were looking at additional rooms necessary to reach our 2 million mark. Possibly, we can look at that again as we go, we improve ourselves with the COVID situation. We're also, so for us, this hotel industry is important. We also understand that we need to diversify too. But at this point, when we're still, we're growing, bringing back our tourists, explain to us the, if there's an importance and time-sensitive to move this forward and start with these incentives, and explain to us how the hotel industry is still important to the island of Guam at this point as we diversify and move forward with different industries on the island, please.
I think that one thing that the pandemic, thank you, Senator, for that question. I think one thing the pandemic did show us is that, yes, a diverse economy is incredibly important, but also, it also showed us so much of how the visitors' industry does contribute to some of the bread and butter components or bread and butter aspects of other industries. So for example, GITA is currently, we rolled out a grant for commercial farmers. And offhand, you wouldn't necessarily think a commercial farmer, what do they do? They supply food to our people. But the number one reason for interruption among our local farmers is because they were once selling to hotels for their banquet services, for their hotel dining, food and beverage. And because of the fewer tourists that we have, because of the fewer visitors, that then resulted in a decline in demand for our local farmers. Our local farmers, our commercial farmers, we'd very much like to see them grow for the food security and the long-term sustainability of our island, but we can't take away the fact that we're now collecting actual data on that many of them do rely on this industry for their daily sales, for their bread and butter, and for making a profitable operation. And then from there, they can expand, and they can sell to the grocery stores, they can sell to, they can sell to the grocery stores, they can sell on the roadside stands and all of that. But oftentimes, the predictability of being able to have a sustainable program wherein they sell their goods to the hotels is a huge contributor. So in addition, we see how the hotel and tourism industry contributes to our military as they come into the island. If we had nowhere to put them and they were all staying on their ships or staying on base, that would be a lot less money flowing out to our economy, to the retailers that we see. With the LEAP program, we did see there were approximately 800 businesses on our island that suffered more than 50% business interruption as a result of the pandemic. So while we do have a number of local businesses that have recovered nicely, you know, our very first GITA grant, and Matt can back me up on this, our very first GITA grant, we had about 2,500 businesses that suffered interruption of at least 25% because of the pandemic. Now, fast forward two years later, we have approximately 800 businesses that are continuing to suffer as a result of the pandemic. So we see that, no, the entire industry is not, the entire island, the island's economic wherewithal is not 100% hinged on tourism, thank God, but it is, it does consider, continue to be a pretty serious part of our economy. And while we do want diversification, it's, you know, the facts are there that tourism continues to be a pretty significant piece of our existing workforce and our existing industry.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Matt, as well. And just, Mr. Chairman, if I may, I just want to wish our CEO here a happy belated birthday.
Oh, thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for the testimony.
Thank you, Senator Moylan. Please allow me also to recognize Senator Talena Nelson, who's joined us this morning as well. And now I'd like to move on to Senator Telo Taregui.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and good morning, everyone, and to my colleagues, and especially to GITA, who's here, my former employers. Thank you. You know, I was listening to you talk about GVB and, you know, the higher-yielding spending scenario, and I know that this was, you know, initiative, as you mentioned earlier, about GVB pushing in that direction. This has been going on for a while, but I'm not showing any data at this point with regards to, has it made a difference? We find that we are more budgeted tourists come to Guam than anything, you know? And it's very difficult, you know, to justify whatever changes have been made. I mean, definitely, we've tried, you know, to attract that type of tourists to Guam, but the numbers have not been there. You know, with this bill, particular bill, was, actually, this segment was included in a bill that was recently passed, Bill 66, but then was taken out and only include the extension for 1,600 rooms that were pushed through. But was there any reason from GITA why they wanted to take it out of the bill at all? Was there anything on your end that requested this body to extract it from Bill 66?
No, that wasn't, I don't believe it was GITA that made that request.
I remember during the public hearing, and even during the committee of the whole on the bill, we were talking about information and data that GITA might have and how this would affect the general fund as far as taxes coming in if this bill were to come into fruition, or this, yeah, this particular bill.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the question, Senator.
What would be the impact, the financial impact that would happen if this bill were to become into law? What would be the financial impact? How much would not be going into the general fund because of this?
Certainly, I think that, to answer that question, one would have to look at the existing inventory of hotels that are in the market for renovation. Something that I think that's important to note for the body is that in the special hotel QC that recently sunsetted and then was re-upped, there was a renovation component there. So those who were wishing to do renovation, they did have a number of years to already undertake that renovation. How many, do you know how many hotels may have? One or two, I think. It wasn't very many. And if you look at some of the existing properties that have recently gone offline to do some renovation, for example, the Fiesta Hotel, they opted not to apply for the special hotel QC. Cortec, the Bayview, was that the hotel property? They also opted, they put in an intent to apply but never followed through. Because there are steps for a hotel to go through in order to, to take advantage of this particular tax benefit, one of the steps is an appraisal. And that can, of course, be costly. So a hotel needs to weigh in whether or not they want to, want to go through the process of applying for the special hotel. The other thing is, time is money. So if a hotel wants to get going now, so during the pandemic, a lot of them opted to go ahead and move forward with renovations and kind of look and see. So invest a little bit in renovation, see if the visitors are coming back, invest a little more, and see if the visitors are coming back. So if past performance is an indicator of future performance, I don't believe that this particular QC would take very many hotels offline who haven't already, A, renovated and utilizing the benefits of the last special hotel QC, or B, renovated during the pandemic, right? We are giving a more generous allowance, I mean, insofar as we're lowering the threshold from 20% to 10%. from 20% to 10% in the language of this bill. That's up to you if you'd like to continue that, or if you'd like to reflect what was in the past. You can also say that instead of giving 10%, I can give 5%. But the number of hotels, we have not received firsthand accounts of the hotels. We know many of the business owners, or many of our hotel property owners, we have not received firsthand accounts of, oh yeah, if you get this, I'll take my hotel offline and renovate. And that's because I think there's just so many moving parts to it. I don't think it's, the decision to renovate involves a lot of different components, not just what's going on with taxes.
Thank you for that information. Currently, has there anybody approached GIDA who's interested in renovating? Currently?
Like Mel said, there has been interest displayed, but with how the tourism industry was operating pre-COVID, with the, with what has happened since COVID has started, and also historically, some of the issues that developers were facing, everyone knows that there was the H2 labor issue at the time, so even the interest in the new hotel construction between the passage of the original program up until today, a lot of that was hampered by not being able to get the requisite construction labor, increased costs due to that labor shortage. So there is a lot of moving factors in it, in the program, that, or just in renovation of a facility of that large in general, that sort of makes certain operators think, maybe now is not the time to make this big investment. Through this program, this bill if passed, it may provide an additional push to say, you know what? Because investing a large amount of money is a risk, there's risk involved. So this might be that push that says, I'm ready to take that risk and invest, we're confident the tourism industry is going to bounce back, and this will help us with our return on our investment. Also, to get back to the quick question about, you know, impacts to the government, when the initial special hotel QC was passed back in the 33rd or 32nd or 33rd Guam Legislature, it was very important that the cap on the benefit was included. At the time, it was 10%. So that lets the body know that every beneficiary will get no more than that amount of money in the tax benefit, as opposed to a QC that was issued 30, 40 years ago, let's say, to like Okura. It was a straight income tax rebate that had no cap on it. Now, through this program, even with the additional benefit provided, there is a cap. So if the program takes effect, applicant applies and is approved pursuant to this program, once the QC is issued, you will know that that beneficiary can only get X dollars from the government of Guam and nothing above that, as opposed to the way it was working before for these types of projects.
Isn't it, you know, common practice amongst businesses to renovate like every 20 years or every 30 years? I mean, it's only in the benefit of their own business, you know, to attract people. I mean, if you're going into a hotel room and, you know, the wallpaper is coming down, the things are, but it's common practice for most hotels to do renovation. That's why I'm kind of surprised, you know, this was, if there was a reason why renovations was not included in the QC, in the original law when it first passed. But there have been, as you mentioned, there has been nobody at this point, you know, interested in doing this particular QC then that has come to your attention? And, real quick, other questions. How many hotels currently are holding a QC?
Currently, there are three. Two special hotel QC, of course. One is, of course, is Subaki Tower, that is open and in operation. There was another one issued to a, another special hotel QC issued to another beneficiary. They unfortunately have, you know, due to circumstances, on their end, haven't been able to construct, begin construction of their hotel, so that QC is pretty much dormant right now. And then, and then I think, formerly Sheraton, I'm not sure the name, but they currently have an active QC as well.
I think I just have one more question here with regards to, you know, any steps that are taken to ensure the, you know, the benefits that are proposed in this bill 231 are aligned with the tourism recovery plans over the course of the next several months and into the next fiscal year, so that tax credits are issued based on tangible data demonstrating a gradual return of visitors from whom which our hotel facilities are intended. So what steps are, will you undertake to ensure this type of benefits that are proposed in this bill?
I think the organic nature, the nature of a qualifying certificate that allows for rebates and abatements, tax liability exists when money is earned. So if, if a hotel does not have visitors, then they're at an income loss, which means that they would not be utilizing a rebate benefit, and their BPT benefit would also be negligible. However, if the market were reviving, then it would be in line with, the way the QC is set up is if they had a gangbusters 2023, then they would likely try to front-load much of their tax benefit in 2023, because that's when they'd have the, that's when it would make the greatest impact for them to be able to use it. So one thing, I think, Senator, you can consider is, you can certainly look at dictating like an upside, like a cap on benefits. That's something that we don't have, but you could certainly say something to the effect of have GVB, or set forth a cap on renovations of $50 million, something along those lines. Because it really does, you don't want a situation, and I don't foresee this being the case, I don't think we're going to be flush with applications for QC, special hotel QC's for renovation. But the, but as lawmakers, I believe that what you're trying to protect is the tax base of the island of Guam. And so what you can potentially look at is, in line with your comments about recovery, is you can dictate those things in legislation and say, we'd like this upside limit or that upside limit. However, my thoughts on that are just, if the past performance of the special hotel QC that we had, people weren't breaking down our door to renovate. We don't have anyone right now that is breaking down our door saying, get this bill passed so I can renovate. We did let all the stakeholders know that today's hearing was going to be taking place if they wouldn't want it to provide any input, so you can see if there's any input. But it doesn't appear to me that this is the hottest QC that everybody wants to take advantage of. So I think the protections are, there's also multiple layers of, when a QC is in place in the law, the GIDA board is involved, there's public comment, there's public comment, there's the GIDA board, and then ultimately, the governor. If at some point in time, there's too many outstanding QC's, or we say, we've met our need, we've done three major renovations, we don't need to do anymore, at that point in time, there are multiple stops along the way that can stop the process. And so I don't know if the, my strategy would be to put it on, in the law, or dictate, see how it goes.
Well, thank you so much for all that. That actually makes a perfect sense, you know, and protecting our, you know, tax base is so important. But like the last bill that was passed regarding any kind of extension with QC's, there was a sunset provision. And, you know, like I said, renovations in any business is a must. I mean, that's something they set aside every year for renovations, because down the line, there's the wear and tear on any product, and of course, people want to make sure that their establishment is, you know, well-received, because word of mouth, this is a great hotel to stay in, it was clean, you know, the beds were up to date. I mean, it's a natural course of business to have. So I don't think it's going to, you know, encourage anyone to come and renovate, maybe not, because that's something they set the funding aside. You still need the funding to do it. Right now, we're in a situation, but then again, we are also in a situation where we're in a downtime of tourism coming, so whatever renovation, and we're hoping that our tourism picks up in the next, you know, hopefully by the end of the year, if anything sooner. The last thing is the caps that you mentioned, and maybe even consider a sunset provision in this section as well, just to protect it. But I greatly appreciate all your comments. Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator Taidegui. I'd also like to recognize Senator Frank Bloch Jr. With that, Senator Peritz.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and good morning to Ms. Mediola and Mr. Bazza. Thank you for being here today. So I'm very much interested in, you know, developing buildings that are more environmentally friendly. Would you see, would GIDA be opposed to putting in language, so the part in subsection E, renovation cost, it states three different conditions, right, to qualify for this? And earlier, you were mentioning how some, it would be beneficial for buildings or these hotel owners to perhaps upgrade their facilities to make it more energy-efficient. Would GIDA be opposed to putting in language specifically for that?
No, we would not. That would be a very, very great, good idea.
Okay. Yeah, the other thing too is, I guess this would not fall under renovation cost, because it's specifically looking at structural improvements, correct, for renovation? Is, to qualify as a renovation cost, is it specifically structural?
No, there's also, so now, the renovation tends to be pretty heavy on the structural, if you will, but primarily because it takes a lot more curtains and carpets than, you know, than changing out something like the plumbing system or the HVAC system. Having said that, because of the reduced threshold, so at one point in time, it had to be 20% of the appraised value, and so this bill proposes a 10% appraised value, you could potentially lay out a number of different types of renovations and improvements. But no, renovation does not have to be structural to be considered a renovation, it just has to accomplish the material increases of the value of property, prolonging the life, useful life, and adapting the property to a newer, better use. And then, number four, could be, of course, reducing carbon foot, measures to reduce the property's carbon footprint through certain measures. Although I would say, don't get too specific, because as you know, renewable technology is changing every day, so you don't want to say something like, install solar, solar panels, but then not talk about batteries, or different types of renewables, for example. So I wouldn't get too granular in the language, but I would certainly, I think, number four, adding a number four renewable would be fine. Matt, do you have anything to add?
Yeah, I agree with everything Mel said. That being said, if you wanted to make it more specific, or then instead of structural, it also includes, let's say, other parts of the property, I don't know, like the landscape, I mean, things like that, or other sustainable things, you could always, you know, make those additions to it. But I mean, a hotel facility is a, it's a whole thing, it's the parking, the grounds, the building itself. So when an application comes in, we would look at it in terms of the whole, the whole facility, not just the building itself.
Not just the structure.
Yeah.
So one of the, a recent hotel came to visit us, and our prospective hotel construction came to visit us, and one of the things in their plan was to put native plants all along the property. And that was, that's a good thing for a number of reasons. Native plants, they repel pests better than foreign plants that come in, right? They don't get as sick, there's less maintenance, there's less upkeep, they, they're better for the environment. And so one thing I can see is you could have a hotel changing out their landscape to reflect more native plants, right? That's something that could also be applied here, not necessarily articulated in the bill, but something that's not necessarily straight structural, but could change the look and feel of the landscape of a property for the better and for the more sustainable for the island.
Okay, thank you for that response. And one thing that I was trying to advocate for is, you know, perhaps setting aside some of the rooms in hotels for long-term guests. I know in, looking at the law itself, it specifically restricts it to transient guests that pay daily, weekly rates. Do you think there's room for that in this particular special qualifying certificate to allow for longer-term guests, perhaps through medical tourism per se? You know, because we're thinking about, if we're thinking about higher-yield tourists, right, we want to encourage perhaps longer stays. And I just wondered if GIDA actually did any kind of analysis, economic analysis in regards to these higher-yield tourists, you know, what type are, what kind of tourists are they? And perhaps this could provide some sort of guidance in utilizing this special qualifying certificate.
I'm not sure if we have any hard information on that specific type of visitor, but getting back to the definition of what a hotel is in this bill, it says, you know, transient, daily, weekly rates. What GIDA uses is hotel occupancy tax, right? So hotel occupancy tax is levied against any transient visitor for, I think, up to 90 days, I think, if I remember correctly. So that's sort of the thing that we would, that's sort of our benchmark for, this is a hotel room. It's going to be given out to a, it's going to be rented out or used by an individual or family that is going to pay a hotel occupancy tax. Anything outside of that, if they were going to enter into a long-term lease, long-term lease, then it's no longer considered a hotel room, because it's not going to be assessed a hotel occupancy tax.
So adding that to the bill might create some complexity, because then there are implications for your long-term stay that are not for the disabled, you know, so these sort of semi, these furnished apartments that you see, like Lidera Towers or Alupang, right, where they're clearly staying, you have like federal contractors coming in, they're clearly staying for longer than 90 days, but they're staying for less than a year. So should you include that, the unintended consequence would be that you would need to address that aspect of the market as well.
All right, thank you. In regards to the subsection E, about the three conditions, are there any rules that GIDA has pertaining to that as far as, yeah, any rules regarding that?
We use an appraisal, so an appraisal prior to, and then the plans that are set forth, the expenditures are verified. So it's, there's sort of, there's kind of generally, there are generally accepted tools that we utilize to control what is considered, number one, how to assess the value of the property, it must be a third-party appraisal, not just them saying, my property is worth as much. And then for the plans itself, generally, the plans have a budget attached to them, and then our compliance department is responsible for verifying.
Yeah, and also, the QC application process is relatively thorough, so if someone were to come in and say, you know, well, the bill becomes a law, I'm coming in under this provision of the law, we would specifically tell them, well, the law requires you to say, to justify that, one, you meet the minimum, the minimum investment amount, right? And then, second, that your project meets the criteria under the law. So we will specifically ask them, show us how your project will do one of these three things, and if you add on the environmental sustainability aspect to it, and that as well. So we will specifically ask them, and as it goes through the public hearing, and like Mel said, the public hearing, the full management review, and then ultimately, the board, that, those will be at the forefront of what we're looking at for this specific qualifying certificate.
Okay, thank you so much for your responses. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator Peritz. Senator Brown?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and certainly thank you to our representatives from GIDA for being here to respond with regards to this bill. Just for further clarification, I just want Just for further clarification, I just wanted to ask the administrator, you know, I understand you mentioned you can look at the amounts of funds that are spent. It could be landscaping, it could be, you know, carpeting and curtains, or whatever the case may be. But is there something that GITA can, can further define, or should we include that without being, as you said, very specific? That it can be limiting, but just general parameters of what you would define as renovations? I mean, we know that normally when, when a property perhaps is purchased, like we've seen recently, one of our hotels being purchased and being rebranded, it's not uncommon for the new owner, obviously, to want to come in and, and put their, they might have a certain style of decor and, and design that they put in place so that, you know, their hotels are recognized at other destinations, there's a certain brand, you know, if you're, you're going to a certain type of hotel. So I just wanted to get a better idea of what exactly do we, do we look as renovations? Because when I think of renovations, I think of actual tangible, you know, concrete, and I, I don't think of it as, you know, redoing the curtains and the carpeting. That, that to me is not what I'd look at as a major investment. Certainly for a hotel, it may be. If you got an 18, 20, 32-story hotel, it could be. But is that something that GITA, how would you, how would you define that beyond just looking at what the amounts are that they're claiming, this is what we spent? And, you know, I, I don't look at putting new curtains to me as renovations.
Right.
You know, I do love the Harmon, you know, Home and Garden Channel, but, so I just to get a bit of clarification of what exactly, you know, if I'm coming in, or company's coming in to do this in a hotel, or their own existing hotel, what would fall into those categories?
Sure, when, with the previous special hotel QC, the, the threshold, the, the research that went into the last special hotel QC that had the renovation component at 20% said that this was significant enough such that it's not just changing out, and the, example they used, it's not just changing out curtains and carpets. So that could be part, that could certainly contribute to the total bill here, but it wouldn't just be that. We do think that the, setting the 10% still maintains that this is a significant construction, especially if you look at the construction costs today, you see our construction costs going up. So 20%, 10 years ago, 10% versus 10% today could very well be a similar number or a higher number, when you're talking about higher labor costs, higher materials, and all of that. But you're right, curtains alone do not constitute a renovation, and I don't think that that would meet the minimum threshold, amount threshold that, in order to qualify for this particular QC.
Out of curiosity, during this, this downtime, during this pandemic, was there any much activity with regards to our hotels during this downtime? I understand it's a time of uncertainty, granted, I mean, they have employees, they probably had to reduce hours or let go, and, you know, from that perspective, it may not be a priority, but did you see any of our existing hotels use this time? This downtime is an opportunity to do any type of, you know, physical improvements to their property while they didn't have, you know, the volume and traffic? Because prior to that, I mean, some of these hotels, in certain times of the year, you almost literally could not get a hotel room. You know, with that, and every time we had a major military exercise, that pretty much just blocked out a lot of availability of rooms being, you know, for tourists coming in. So did you guys get any feedback or much activity during this downtime at all?
Yes, we saw a number of hotels go ahead and undertake some light renovations and take their hotels offline during that period of time. Some of them came back online when there were some follow, further, their military exercises, and, Matt, have you, any, any properties you can think of that, just any renovations during the pandemic?
Not, not off the top of my head.
One of the other, I, I think something that we've noticed just from the special hotel QC at all, not, not the renovation, but new development, is over the last two years with regard to the, the quarantine, the quarantine restrictions that were going on in many of our investor countries. So Korea is where a lot of investment is coming out of, Japan, if you can't send your managers or your executives to Guam to check out the property, then it becomes a much more difficult proposition, right? And so we did observe quite a bit of that at the outset of the pandemic, where executives were just not coming to visit the property, and in which case it made it even worse to some extent, because then there were decisions about, do we shut down? And if we shut down, do we shut down altogether? Do we go, you know, and so, so that was a little more scary. Now they're coming back, now, now executives are able to visit and make those assessments a little easier, which, which we believe will be beneficial overall.
Well, that's, well, understandable. Hopefully, maybe now that things are opening back up, maybe slowly but surely, they actually may come back and make further investments. Because granted, I mean, in order to operate and be competitive, I mean, there's a need to do that, but certainly there's some incentive to encourage them, so that we can maintain a certain standard in our presentation on Guam with regards to these hotels. I mean, that's, that's certainly a plus for our island. So thank you very much for responding to my questions. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Senator Brown. Senator Duñez?
Situs Massey, Mr. Chairman, and with an excellent presentation from GITA and some great questions by my colleagues. I really don't have any questions. I wanted to make one observation. One of the properties that I've seen has done, at least from the external that I can see, a major renovation, has been Fiesta Resort. Drive through Tumon all the time just to see how things are going, and I know over several months, I mean, I think their entire parking lot was containers, obviously having shipped in materials and goods and, you know, and I know a couple of the folks that work there, and they said that that's basically going to be a new hotel when it's done. So I think that there have been, you know, bullish property managers, if you will, or owners, and I think this incentive speaks for itself. I think you've done a good job now in explaining what is happening within the region, although modest compared to other locations. I think the security of Guam being a US, you know, under the United States flag, and of course, our proud Guam flag, really kind of gives us a little bit of an edge in terms of secure investment. So I think this is a reasonable approach. I certainly support it as a co-sponsor, so I thank you for that. Mel, I think probably what might happen here is when this passes and incentivizes some more, you know, I've been seeing an uptick in tourism as well, talking to some businesses that I've visited this weekend, but, you know, perhaps because it's going to be a ramp-up of sorts, maybe properties will make that decision now to say, okay, we'll go down for three, four, five, six months, maybe like as a rotation. Because I know also a number of properties, the federal spend here, I mean, there, I've been to several properties that, if you have breakfast or lunch there, 90% of the crowd is, you can tell are either contractors, or certainly folks associated with military movements on the island. And so I think this is a great incentive, and I just thank you for your testimony here and support of the bill. With that, Mr. Chairman, that's all, only comments I have. Situs Massey.
Thank you, Senator Duñez. Senator Nelson?
Thank you. Good morning. I do want to ask, how long do you think it will take GITA to create some kind of contract or QC to complement this legislation?
So specific to this, specific to the special hotel QC inclusive of renovation, the application and all the documentation, the checklist and promotional material, that sort of thing, that's already ready to go. So it would be a relatively quick process.
Okay. So like, it could be turned around within maybe two weeks after we, if the bill passes on session floor?
Yes.
Okay. Well, I thank you very much. Thank you for all the questions you have answered. It really helped educate me on the functionality of what is going on and within the region, and also how you're applying this holistically to our island, and I appreciate that. I want to commend you on the amazing work that you do and your team, and the amazing work you're doing, you have done in the past. So thank you so much, and happy belated birthday, and we look forward to seeing this come to fruition. Thank you, Mel.
Thank you very much. That's very kind.
Thank you, Senator Nelson. Senator Blas?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and good morning, Prima. Happy belated, happy birthday to Mr. Bazza. Pretty much interested too, and I guess the discussion is, you know, with regard to sunset provision. But that said, and recognizing that, as you had stated, Mr. Bazza, you know, many, many businesses, not just hotels, are, and are looking at ways to be able to improve, but trying to, the timing of this is key, as well as, you know, construction costs and whatnot. But that said, is, what would be your suggestion if we were to implement a sunset provision to this legislation? What would be your suggestion as to what that timeline could be?
I would not want to pick a hard date. I will say this, when the, when the program was first approved, public law, 33rd, end of the 33rd legislature, or 32nd, it was for a five-year period. So that five period, you know, came and went, and then the program itself has been extended for an additional 10 years, up until 2030, December 2031. So that would include this section of the law if, if it were, if and when it were to pass. If, if the body would like to consider a specific sunset date for this specific section of this program, that is, of course, would be, you know, that would be fine. We would not oppose that, of course. But like I said, as of right now, this would be on the books, this program if passed would be for the next 10 years, up to, well, nine years now, pretty much, up 2031.
Okay, so.
But, Senator, what you do want to be, of course, cognizant of when, when looking at it is, from a, from a, from a technical standpoint, on the GITA side of the House, we don't have any issues with when you decide the date to be, but when it, when it comes to doing any kind of construction in Guam, as you're aware, sometimes things take time to get the permits, the approvals. I know that one thing that did delay the Fiesta Resort was the state archaeologists' reviews, right, because there's doing some, some work around the pool area and near the ocean. So these things can take a little longer. So I wouldn't put in a five, I would, maybe my suggestion would be mirror your existing special hotel, that way they both sunset at the same time. That would be very, that would be easy for us, and also, I think, good for a developer as far as going out and articulating the differences. Anything shorter, just to be cognizant of how things tend, sometimes get delayed. We're still having, the island still has struggles with H2B, and that, that's just the reality of the, of the construction industry. We see an unprecedented amount of construction monies coming in to the, behind-the-fence work, making outside-the-fence work incredibly challenging, and so we wouldn't want to kind of discourage that in any way.
Yeah, and also, like, depending on the, the scale of the project, let's say, someone said, well, one of the things I want to do is build a parking garage, because there's not enough parking on my hotel. I mean, depending on the scale, what, what, what other, you know, like regulatory requirements that we need to just to get to begin, so mirroring that, if, if they want to do something really significant, if someone said I want to build a new tower in my hotel to add on to the inventory. So it, it does make sense to give some time. We did see with the, I can say with the existing, when the program was first launched, because of the H2 labor issues, you know, and coupled with having to go through Guam Land Use Commission and, and all those things, it kind of made it like, oh, that we were feeling, people were feeling, oh, can I even come in and apply? Is it, will I be, will I miss the deadline? All those kinds of things. So those would be areas to be cognizant of if and when establishing a sunset period for this specific provision of the law.
You know, when you're looking at the criteria, when looking at what would be, for lack of a better term, qualified under this, and you bring up a point here with regards to, let's just say they want to, they want to put in a new structure, such as a parking garage or parking lot. Would you oppose, be opposed to any, or do you have any suggestions to any addition to what may be qualified, if you will, under this program? Land acquisition?
I think land acquisition would qualify.
Yeah.
Yeah, land acquisition would qualify.
So in the calculation of what would be an eligible cost.
Right.
The QC law already has certain eligible costs. One of them is land acquisition, A&E, so if they had to do all the A&E, architecture engineering, actual construction costs, building and site improvements, site improvements includes the whole property, of course, and then also, you know, furnitures and furnitures, fixtures and equipment. So if they were to buy whole new, everything, all new furniture, all new beds, all new everything for the whole hotel, all of those would be included. So when we would look at, there's two parts to it. So first, it's looking at, do you meet the minimum investment amount? If this were to pass, it would be, okay, you made the 20%, you met the 10% minimum investment amount. Now, what, what of, what you're, what are you investing in that would be eligible to be calculated in the benefit? So they may have something that's totally not eligible, they could say, oh, training costs for something, and we say, oh, that's not what the law allows.
Advertisement costs in Japan.
Advertisement costs, your lawyer's fee, stuff, stuff like that. So, so those things would not be included, but we say, okay, these things are, so we would look at that amount, multiply that by the benefit, and say, your benefit is capped at that dollar amount.
Okay. Okay. Well, thank you very much. Again, belated happy birthday, Prima.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator Blas. I just have one question before I go to the main sponsor of the bill for his closing, and that's, you mentioned something about a hotel QC that's dormant. Are you, is that a hotel that got a QC but never got constructed?
That's correct.
And what, what hotel is that? Or what business is that that applied for the QC?
The beneficiary is JMSH LLC. Yeah, they, they received the QC, but they were just, they haven't been able to, to commence construction or move forward, so they're just dormant.
Where was their hotel slated to be constructed at?
It was going to be in Tumon, sort of adjacent, behind a Contamol. So not on the beach side, it was going to be on the other side of the road.
Okay, thank you. That's the only question I had, and with that, also, happy belated birthday as well.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Now, Senator Moreland, you may wrap up, close, ask any more questions you have.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm familiar with that area that you just discussed there, that was kind of my backyard, but, you know, we'll, we'll see how that goes along in the, in the future. I appreciate all the additional questions by my colleagues and how you responded, but just for a little bit more of a clarification, right? So we, we had these hotels that are vacant, that didn't, wasn't able to take advantage of the military occupancy or local occupancy as well, and doors have been closed, barricades are still up, and it's not helping our economy at all by these buildings just being dormant there. I think what we're looking at, like what the bill discusses from the title, is economic development with renovation. We're going to grow our general fund, this will be helpful if we incentivize, as you discussed, renovating some of these hotels, especially those that are offline. How do, how do we do that when, when we have no tourists for these hotels to pay for their expenses, while they're still paying their property tax or other things? And I'm sure when they try to open their doors, once again, there's a lot of things they need to do before inviting customers to come back in. So appreciate if you can just reiterate one more time, the market that we're looking at, and how, if we do move this bill forward into law, how these, how the economy will grow, not necessarily take away from the general fund, because right now, these hotels are offline. They're not producing general funds, they're not producing corporate taxes, employee taxes, and so forth. We're not circulating money. But with the renovation and incentivizing them, and GITA marketing this product, how would this help our general fund grow, please?
Certainly, I think that this has been said before, and, you know, we continue to reiterate, 5%, of zero is, is zero, and 5% of $100 is $5, but 5% of $1,000, right, is $50, or anything in between. When a hotel goes offline to undertake a significant renovation, there's a difference between upkeep and renovation. Upkeep is when you make it, maintain its livability and the ability to occupy, right? You make sure you don't get a visit from public health, that's upkeep. You make sure you don't get a visit from public health, that's upkeep. Renovation is really improving the overall experience for a visitor. Something that, and I know that GBB could speak better to this, but repeat visitors are generally a really great, a great thing, not just one-time visitors. And repeat visitors hire spending visitor, visitors with more means and more flexible discretionary spending. And generally, when you have a Tumon that is full of hotels, where there will always be a hotel that's a little bit less maintained, less preserved than the rest of the hotels, there will always be properties like that. But what we're trying to do is make it such that the vast majority of properties on the island that attract visitors are new and clean and welcoming to our visitors. And overall, we'd love to be able to sell that story to investors. Even when investors come to our island to invest in aquaculture, technology, and any of our other industries that we're trying to sell, they stay in our local hotels. And so if that's how we welcome them with something that's not, you know, up to par, then that can speak volumes for what they may or may not do afterwards, right? And so this is really just a part of putting our best face forward, putting our best face forward in a competitive, in a highly competitive marketplace, and continuing to ensure that Guam has the competitive advantage to go out and sell our, the experience of Guam to visitors, but also selling ourselves as a destination for investment.
Thank you. Also, we were discussing the difference between, last time we had discussion with the QC for new hotel rooms, and at one point, we were also discussing renovations at that time. This was then separated, and that's why we're here today, on renovations. One of the reasons, if you can recall also, is that the renovations was associated with additional hotel rooms. What we're doing with this bill is completely separate now. If you can further explain that, appreciate it.
Yes, it is separated. As you can see, one example of a similar market where they're undertaking the same thing is the state of Hawaii. They're currently not on a track to build more hotel rooms. In fact, what they're trying to do is the same thing. They're also trying to improve the visitor experience. Fewer visitors who spend more have more discretionary income. And how are they doing that? They're doing that by encouraging hotels to take their, to provide a more superior experience, except they're not offering tax incentives to do it, and we are, right? So we're right in the, I believe that through this legislation, we're right in the middle. We're, and I think we're hitting, we're hitting many marks here, because we do have something competitive that we can go out to investors with, that there are tax incentives associated with renovation. But at the same time, the motivation here looks less at the overall inventory and more at a higher, a higher spend, a higher nightly occupancy rate than the previous bill, which was overall number of hotel rooms. So this is targeting occupancy charges as opposed to an aggregate number of hotel rooms of any amount.
Thank you. There's also some concerns of the time length of the bill. And there is actually, Matt, you mentioned, there is a timeframe. And this is not a forever QC. We did expand it previously because of situations with H2B, and of course, COVID as well. You mentioned, Mel, that time is money for a lot of these folks into construction. Would you see somebody, like, trying to renovate their hotel, take it offline? And wouldn't they want to look at something quicker than longer? I would assume that, or you can explain to us how important it is for the industry or the owners of the hotel to get the renovations done as fast as possible? And why would that be so?
Yes, thank you, Senator. As a, I believe the experience of our investors, or what our investors will report, is that, of course, they'd want, it's common sense that they'd want to take rooms offline when it was less likely that they'd be able to sell them. And so right now, with the gradual return of our visitors, our visitors are coming back. We're very hopeful that we will achieve banner numbers in the very near future. And that's what, that is the forward march that we're, that is what we're marching toward. Having said that, investors, right now, they do have the flexibility to take portions of their properties offline to be able to undertake these renovations. And then, when the banner numbers return, that is when they can utilize some of the rebate and the benefit. And at that point in time, Guam will be in a recovery mode, where we won't feel that the financial impact of a tax incentive such as this. So time is money in as far as the commitment for hotels to improve their product. Now is a really great time to get that, especially when you have a qualifying certificate such as this, which will allow them to capture the rebates and the abatements over the course of the recovery years. So as visitors come back, they can proportionally seek the benefit associated, even though all of their spending was front-loaded in this time when there were very few, very few visitors. Does that answer your question, sir?
Absolutely, thank you. And also, thank you, Matt. And, Mr. Chairman, with that, I appreciate my colleagues being here once again, and my co-sponsors to the bill, and especially the presentation by GIDEA and answering our questions. In closing, I'd just like to say that the renovation is for the economic development of our tourism industry, helping our island grow, and to generate general funds for our island to sustain as we go through this process. Right now, time-sensitive with COVID ending and getting ready for this market to boom once again. So with that, thank you again to our panel, and thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Senator Moreland. If there are no further questions or comments, this will conclude discussions on Bill 231-36 LS. And we will recess for five minutes before we proceed with discussions on Bill 259-36 LS. Half a day, this virtual public hearing will reconvene for the committee to hear and accept testimony on Bill Number 259-36 LS, the Akten Guma Group Use Manamku Accommodations Incentive Act, an act to add a new Article III to Chapter 58, Title 12, Guam Code Annotated, relative to establishing new special qualifying certificate incentives for the development of elderly residential living housing comprising of independent living, assisted care, and nursing home accommodations introduced by Senators Telo Titegui, Amanda Shelton, Sabina Perez, Joanne Brown, Frank Blas, and Jose Pito Terlali. We will proceed with discussions on Bill Number 259-36 LS. Allow me to recognize my colleagues again in attendance today, Senator Frank Blas Jr., Senators Telo Titegui, Senator Sabina Perez, Senator Joanne Brown, and Senator Chris Duennius. And we will now proceed with discussions on Bill 259-36, beginning with the primary sponsor, Senator Telo Titegui, to present her statement.
Half a day, and thank you, Mr. Chair, for including Bill 259 in today's public hearing, and for the opportunity to provide an overview on this measure. Bill 259 simply incentivizes developers to construct elderly housing communities or renovation structures into meaningful elderly housing, mix independent living, assisted living, and nursing housing opportunities using GIDEA's QC or qualifying certificate program as an tax incentive vehicle. Mr. Chair, the Senior Citizen Housing Task Force is challenged with the immense feat of figuring out the correct formula to develop a sustainable elderly community that meets the needs of our Manamku. Increasing the stockpile of Manamku homes is one thing. Developing elderly housing that is secure and provides the level of care needed by our Manamku is significant. A community where a Manamku can live and age in place. Elderly communities that serve our people. As we age, our social priorities and need, and need, and as a result, they become more difficult to fulfill due to health problems, mobility challenges, limited access to care, and a shrinking social network, contributing to many Manamku's, Manamku feeling lonely and isolated. Mr. Chair, Bill 259 provides a vehicle to stimulate the private sector to develop and operate elderly communities. The big question is, does the government of Guam believe it can operate as a sustainable assistant care community or nursing housing or home? Or whether the government believes that the private sector is the best suited for that role? Perhaps the government has initially marginalized such opportunities from taking a foothold over the years. Today, Mr. Chair, Guam does not have an assistant living facility. Guam's last elderly community is summer homes in Dedido, designed as an independent living community similar to apartments. But for able-bodied Manamku, prior to the completion of summer homes is Saint, and, but for able-bodied Manamku's, prior to completion of summer homes in Saint Dominic's, a nursing home developed with 49 independent rooms. Saint Dominic was built in 1987. Currently, Mr. Chair, that was 35 years ago. And since then, the government and private sector have not thrown their hat into the ring to build a community that provides assistant care to our Manamku. Mr. Chairman, according to the National Conference of State Legislatures, NCSL, by 2034, the first time in nation's history, adults aged 65 and older are expected to outnumber children. As the US population grows older, states are exploring policies to ease the transition and offer support. Moreover, NCSL... Moreover, NCSL believes that legislators play an important role in meeting the distinct needs of this population. Older adults experience social, physical, and economic challenges that other age groups generally don't. According to the NCSL, about half of Americans over sixty-five are predicted to need some level of long-term health-related services and supports. Other older adults also face economic constraints due to limited retirement resources. Increased age is associated with high rates of poverty, ranging from nine percent from ages sixty-five to seventy-four, to fourteen percent ages eighty-five and older. Older adults may also face more transportation barriers than any other age group, as people tend to drive less frequently or not at all as they age. So, Mr. Chair, with these issues that we plague not only in the mainland but also in Japan as well, where they are predicting these types of numbers spiking within 2030, I look forward as we move forward, and thank you for having this meeting, because as we speak, there are more people aging every year, and that reminds me to say happy birthday, belated birthday to you as well, Melanie, you know, because of this. So, Mr. Chair, I look forward to reviewing additional suggestions that this body may offer to assist our aging community right here at home. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator Titegui. We'll now hear testimony from those who've joined us today, beginning in the order of how participants have signed in in our sign-in sheet. We'll begin first with Melanie Mendiola Oguida.
All right. Half a day, Senator Rogel, and members of the Committee on Economic Development, Agriculture, Power, and Energy Utilities and Arts, and thank you for the opportunity to provide testimony on Bill 259-36. The development of new housing facilities for Guam's elderly population is a laudable objective, and GIDA wholeheartedly supports the bill's intent. My name is Mel Mendiola, I'm the administrator and CEO, and I'll be providing the testimony on our agency's behalf. Bill 259 seeks to create a special qualifying certificate, a QC, to incentivize the construction of various types of housing for elderly persons. If such development occurs, it will provide vitally needed facilities for Guam's Manamco while simultaneously spurring new economic activity. Based on our analysis, the tax incentive framework established in Bill 259 is similar to the already-established Special Hotel QC Program. There are several aspects of the bill that can use some further discussion and development, such as the definition of affordable and the definition of developer, among other areas. In addition, it may be prudent for the committee to consider establishing in the bill a minimum investment threshold in either a dollar amount or minimum number of units or Manamco served to validate the efficacy of the Special QC Program. GIDA looks forward to further communication and information regarding Bill 259 and the overall elderly housing needs of Guam, and stand ready to assist in further enhancing the bill. We look forward to working with the bill's sponsors and the committee as the bill works its way through the legislative process. Thank you for your time and attention, and I am here along with our Business and Industry Development Supervisor, Mr. Matt Baza, to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for that testimony this morning, and now we will go to Mr. Carlos Camacho, Micronesia Community Development Corporation.
Good morning, Senator Rogel, Senators, thank you. My name is Carlos Camacho, I'm the Executive Director for Micronesia Community Development Corporation. For the record, MCDC is an NGO, so we don't benefit on any of these tax benefits here as written, but I would just like to give my perspective on what I think this will have an impact on this industry, because I've been in the affordable housing industry for many, many years, and this is one of these targeted groups that are, that we need to see how we can handle and provide incentives to develop for the elderly population. So I'm going to go ahead and read my testimony based on what I understand on the bill. Half a day, Senator Rogel, and Senators. Based on this proposed legislation, I applaud the authors of this legislation, providing a qualifying certificate incentive to attract developers, contractors, and operators to help target our elderly population in getting into housing as described within the bill, such as independent living, assisted living, and nursing housing opportunities. As we all know, our elderly population is fragile, and it's this type of legislation that will encourage the development of housing opportunities for our Manamcos. Also, the rising cost of construction due to inflationary impacts, the rising cost of interest rates, as well, will make an operational cost of these types of facilities much more expensive to operate. The targeted incomes, as stated in this proposed legislation, is focused on area median income, again, area median income of two hundred and fifteen percent, which allows the diverse income population of elderly. To further describe the targeted population as described in HUDs and USDA's area median income within the hundred and fifteen percent table, this is targeted to four categories of population. One, very low income; two, low income; three, extreme low income; and four, moderate income. So what I did in this testimony, I provided two published area median income, one from HUD and one from USDA. Of course, they go up to family household of eight, I only did one and two because we are targeting the elderly population where it's either a single elderly or a coupled elderly, right? So I just decided to show household of one and two. So if we look at the first table, this is as of FY 2022, there again, defined under HUD, three types of income limits, and this is anywhere from fifty to eighty percent area median income, and that's from family of one to family of two, and the numbers there as shown in the table, ranging from sixteen thousand up to forty-eight thousand. Same as the USDA's table, they go up to fifty percent to one hundred and fifteen percent. Remember, HUD goes up to eighty percent, USDA goes up to one fifteen. And under USDA, they got five categories of income table, but most importantly, the very low income, low income, and moderate income is the targeted income that USDA uses to make sure that their benefactor qualifies for whatever product is being used under On my opinion, by utilizing both income limits as defined by HUD and USDA, USDA or HUD finance can be leveraged so that the elderly applicant that meets the income threshold can qualify for federal assistance, and the facilities can qualify for federal financing and grants as well. So, for example, if a developer is going to use any of the federal financing program, it's not stated in my letter, but their term goes up to forty years. The higher the term, the smaller the debt service, the better, the lower the payment for operational costs. So this is why we wanted to make sure the one fifteen percent area median income, as long as that's the trigger point, that's targeting that defined category, as I said earlier, is mentioned or written into the rules and regs of any of this QC policy, so that we make sure that it's still targeting that targeted audience. Also, by not placing a dollar number as traditionally placed in legislation, an area median income table by both HUD and USDA is published annually, which assures that the targeted population is always entertained as described in the two tables. I say that because in the same body, you seen many different exercises, when you guys had to amend many policies, because there's always a fixed number, and due to inflation and due to the cost of construction. One good example is my good old friends at Guam Housing, where two or three times they had to come here and amend their costs of material because of the cost of goods going up. So by using the income limits, that is published annually, and you're keeping it within the defined, again, very low, low and moderate income categories to qualify for these potential end-use of independent living, assisted living, or nursing care. In addition, you know, I never applied for a QC, as I told you, but in addition, I was listening to Matt earlier, twenty, thirty years ago, there used to be a straight-line QC benefit where you get the tax benefit, if I'm not mistaken, Matt, where you get the tax benefit from those three-legged taxes, the BPT, the corporate tax, the land tax, or the user tax. And then it was further amended by this legislative body to do some type of development percentage portfolio. I know in this particular case, under the elderly program, this had increased the value of percentage of the costs of goods. And the only reason that I support the increase of value, unlike a hotel that had a twenty percent cap that was described earlier in another bill, these are not commercial generating revenues. These are targeting an elderly population with fixed income. So this is why the formula on a higher cap, I support, but again, when GIDA does their numbers and you guys do your numbers, you guys will hopefully resolve that amongst your committee and GIDA. But that's the reason I concur on the higher cap, because when you're going after an elderly population with fixed income, either they're living off social security or just very low income, and the cost of inflation and the cost of interest, there's no way that a lot of them will qualify for any of these programs. And that isn't another topic to discuss, and the strategies and how to make them qualify, but that's, I didn't put that in here, because there'll be probably five pages for me to write different solutions. I know from comparing the threshold and the existing QC laws, at twenty percent, the difference of these QC's are income generating operations like hotels and housing development. I brought that up because twenty-three years ago, I participated in the same body under Senator Tony La Morena, I participated under that QC law, parallel with the hotel occupancy QC, and you know, there was a cap for that, but like I said earlier, that was for-profit-driven developments. Affordable housing has a profit, they still got to make a number. Hotel operation still has to make some number, so maybe that's where there's a cap in the future amended cap laws. Finally, we look forward to the technical guidance of my neighbor, GIDA, here, so that this legislation will finally be adopted by this body with the proper advice of GIDA. So, and the reason I say that here is, they're the one going to be underwriting the QC Program when an applicant comes to their office. So we want to make sure that when you do your markup or whatever, updating the bills or suggestions from GIDA, that it's incorporated, so there'll be a lot smoother transition when a developer or operator or contractor applies a GIDA, so that we're all singing on the same page. So on closing, I do support Bill 259. We do need a program to entice the development for elderly housing population. As I described earlier, I've done a lot with affordable housing for a different targeted audience, and that's been very successful. And ironically, if you look at today's Guam PDN News, there's another story which maybe this body and your researchers and your writers will look at, it's the renters now, the moderate-income renters. They can't find units out there because, once, it's the same thing that's happening to this elderly population with limited financial resources. They can't go find rental because everybody's renting their price at a higher market, and I don't blame the homeowners that's going after the military market. Then you got our sister agency, Gura, who asked HUD to raise their rates because they couldn't find units, so now they got higher rental rates. So you got the left side of the equation of the low income at fifteen hundred dollar rental rates, you got the right side of the equation of the military at twenty-four hundred dollar rates, and then you got the guys in the middle, the gap. So that's another issue that's very similar and parallel to what's happening while we're doing a QC for the elderly. So we hopefully can provide an affordable elderly development to expand to other categories. We do have independent living, as the Senator described, that's being done by Gura and their public housing, and then we do have project-based vouchers through Summertown Homes in Dedido, that used to be the former Lada Estates in Dedido, but again, that is targeted to incomes at sixty percent area median income and below. So the families earning seventy, eighty, ninety, hundred, fifteen percent, they don't qualify for those housing program. So this is again why I love this mixture of the word "up to one fifteen," so a developer can do a mixture of the sixty, seventy, eighty, and one fifteen. Let's mix these elderly together, I don't want to segregate the low income just for low income, the very low just for very low. I would rather see a mixed community with a mixed, diverse elderly population. So again, that's my description, my opinion, my experience based on many years of dealing with programs that meet the one fifteen percent area median income. But I stand ready to answer any clarity. Again, I'm just submitting this as my testimony. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Camacho, for that testimony. All right, we'll now open up the floor to my colleagues to ask questions, beginning with Senator Titegui.
Mr. Chair, I'll yield to my colleagues, I'll go last.
Okay.
No problem.
Senator Blas.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and Carlos, thank you, Mel, and Mr. Baza, thank you again for sticking around. I guess maybe the question is more so to Carlos. The bill proposes, you know, for the development, and you know, thank you very much for all you've done for housing and your expertise in providing a lot of times some guidance and some ideas, you know, on how to make housing not just more affordable but more accessible for people. That said, and recognizing that this is a niche and this is an area that I don't want to say we've neglected, I think that the time has come because of the dynamics of the family households and the necessity for assisted living and in some cases, independent living, assisted living, and the like. That said, in your, best of your knowledge, is there any existing structure or development that can easily fold into this type of structure or this type of accommodation? Or does it, do we need to build, you know, a... you know, a, you know, a new development? Is there something that, you know, that can be transitioned or that can be retrofitted or whatnot? I'm just looking at how long this could possibly take to be able, the need is now. And is there, is there any, is there any place now that you know that could probably fit this?
I am not sure what real estate assets are out there that we can easily convert. But what I like about the bill, it approaches, two approaches, the renovation and construction from ground zero up. So under renovation, for example, I don't know who owns it now, but for example, down in Jonah, there used to be a, this is hypothetical because I don't know who owns it now. There used to be the Friary, oh, not the Friary, but one-bedroom units down there in Jonah that, but I thought I saw on the news that someone bought it. I'm not sure what their plans are for that. But that's one easily converted to a elderly program. And maybe, maybe that's what they're doing because I still see signed it under construction. I'm not sure what that is, but there used to be so many one-bedroom units there. I know when Gura announces their qualifying allocation plan, that's the tax credit that I do for like, you guys all know me as Ironwood, right? That's up to them, whoever oversees housing. But you can ask them to focus if there's a need for elderly housing, and they could change the QEP every year to that. But because there's a big service industry demand for workers, the service industry, we have a huge waiting list, just like my colleague Cortec and Summertown, they got a huge waiting list of that industry's just waiting. And today, just between them and us, we've got over 2,000 units that we've built since that program got built. So that program was provided by an IRS low-income housing tax credit incentive by the US government. So that shows how that worked and that shows that that makes it. So this one here, to answer your question, if you're going to start from ground zero, it'll be like any development we do. Yeah, you're right. It's very fragile population. The population gets older and older and faster. But unfortunately, I'm glad this is a bipartisan support. I've seen different senators sponsoring this bill. It's sooner rather than later. But at least now we do have independent elderly now, right now. But again, that's targeted to 60% air median income. So not everybody qualifies. And you're going to, you're going to see that same demand and ask, what about us? What about us? We know we make a little bit too much money. We don't meet the 60%. What about us? I think this bill will solve that. But for a fast turnaround, I don't know if I can answer what's out there because the pressures of the demand, when you see a rundown, I haven't seen any rundown apartment to be converted. I know, for example, in the Ganya Heights, I can't speak for the landlords, but the Cliff Hotel, there's a lot of one-bedroom unit there that are, they're looking at rehabilitating. But they're going after, I don't want to speak for the developer because they did approach me, they're going after the VA VASH vouchers because they're trying to tie them close to the Naval Hospital. But that's, that's a developer going after that. Now, I don't know if they know about this program. Maybe if they know about this, maybe they'll reserve some stuff for manomko's up there. I don't know. But I think from ground zero, this same principle applies to affordable housing, by the way, right? This is just one component. But if this works with the guidance of GITA's, Matt, I know Matt does all the QC technical guidance. If he provides that to the senators and the rules and regs are written, and we figure out how to fast-track the permitting process, especially because it's elderly, I think are, which I know I've seen in another hat of work, I sit on the Guam Association vouchers. I understand there is a digitized permitting process that Vince Ariola announced to us. If that happens, hopefully, the turnaround time for a permit would be a lot faster. And I just, but to see which can come real fast, I, I'm not sure how I can, I don't know what's out there at this time. I apologize. I can't answer that at this point.
Mel, Matt, do you know of any?
Of any existing properties that might?
Or if there was, have they expressed any interest?
There has been some expressed interest over the years in elderly housing, yes. They are, we do have the general qualifying certificate that might be applied to. That offers specifically income tax and real property tax abatements, rebate and abatement. And so this is more expansive and specific than that. And, but we have had, not a lot of interests, but there's been a few visitors in this area.
Okay, you know, and then when you get into an area and granted, you know, a lot of times, most people associate your qualifying certificates to basically infrastructure building, brick and mortar. Okay? But then when you talk about assisted living and nursing home, that's a lot of time, you become now more labor intensive, for lack of a better term. You know, your human resource. Because it's not just the, it's not just the brick and mortar. It's actually the care that is necessary to provide to this, in this case, you know, this population. Does this bill, would this bill be able to help to recognize and satisfy and address that need outside of what your traditional bounds are for qualifying certificate program? Or is this within the bounds of that?
It appears that the bill as currently written is specific to new construction or renovation of existing. So to speak to your previous remark about are there buildings that can be renovated, that's something that you could possibly address in the language of the bill, where you could say renovation of any, you know, an old hotel and converting it into an elder care type of facility. But it is specifically addressing construction and the costs associated with that. So any costs of the ongoing human resources involved with operating unit such as this, such as an onsite nurse, that is not currently articulated in the bill in its current form that we, that we see.
Okay, well, I appreciate it and I'm recognizing, you know, that this is a step-by-step process. However, you know, when you separate, and again, this is not, we're not talking your traditional brick and mortar type, you know, you just put up the structure and they're, you know, they will come. You, there needs to be that nurse, that caregiver, that caretaker, you know, that would basically separate this out from, you know, another home. And that's the key and that's the important thing. You know, it's one thing to put up a structure. It's another thing to provide the care. And, you know, I think this is something that we can possibly look at and maybe come back to some suggestions that you may have as to how the language can be worded so that, you know, it does include that because that's necessary. I feel it's necessary. Again, you know, we're not, we're not putting up a hotel. We're putting up this, you know, assisted living and a care home, which should have that resource and that infrastructure. Okay, so, but thank you very much. Thank you for, thank you for the presentation. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Senator Blas. Senator Brown. Senator Perez.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I do appreciate all the suggestions from both Carlos and GITA. I really like the idea of having more of an interspersed community than just strictly affordable, those that are eligible for affordable living. I like that suggestion a lot. And I do like the suggestion about the definition of affordable to not be so restrictive so that should the residents want, should they be eligible under HUD or versus USDA? So I just maybe want to follow up that question to GITA. Do you concur with this or what would you suggest as far as definitions pertaining to affordable?
Yes, our main point of, one of our main points of feedback was in fact to really drill down to the definition. And we were in favor of, we concur with Mr. Camacho. And we would definitely concur, especially with the, you know, avoid using dollar amounts because you're going to end up coming back. Instead, use an industry standard such as HUD or USDA. We do concur with that as well. In addition, developer, we would, we would request that you articulate that a developer be developing a minimum number of units because you want to potentially avoid a situation where, we were talking about it recently, we said, oh, so you could build a mother-in-law's studio in your backyard and the cost to constructing that studio, I could then take that and apply it to my income taxes. So there might be a little confusion, not from the perspective of our side of the house. We probably wouldn't, we wouldn't approve a QC like that. But in the delivery of the information to the public, you know, you want to avoid anyone misperceiving what the product, what it is, what the QC is.
Yeah, and just to add to that, with this idea of a minimum, you have to remember that the QC program is first and foremost a tax incentive program for a business to make an investment. So the best way to sort of quantify and understand the efficacy of the investment is to have a baseline. So like in the bill we just discussed, we were talking about adjusting the amount needed for a renovation from 20% to 10%. So that gives us a baseline to see if that makes sense. So without that sort of baseline in, for this specific program, it would be harder for us to really, if everyone came in, they're building one unit here, one unit there, versus saying a developer has to meet a minimum number. For example, the QC law for affordable housing, there's right now under the law, the minimum is required is 25 units. Now, I'm not saying 25 units for this. I'm just saying that there's a minimum baseline in that law to sort of say, okay, in order to, it also is a trigger point. In order for the government to be willing to provide you this tax incentive, you have to meet a minimum required investment amount.
And in the application period, there can be flexibility in as far as a developer can build duplexes, you know, on a, they can say, I'm going to build one duplex here, one duplex there, one duplex there. But over a prescribed amount of time, such that there's a minimum number of manomko's served, you know, to be able to really capture that this is something meaningful and not a one-off for individual, for people doing extensions on their houses to come in and try to get tax breaks.
Thank you. And would you suggest perhaps compliance measures? Because, you know, we want to make sure that the developer is, you know, a bona fide developer and they're not just going to develop and leave and, you know, the structure is, you know, leave our manomko in a structure that's in disrepair. So I think maybe perhaps that's one way we could strengthen the bill too is, maybe, does GITA have any recommendations as far as compliance with the QC?
Yeah, all beneficiaries go through an mandatory annual compliance. It's the only way that they would be able to avail of a tax benefit. So in the case of like a hotel, for example, there is, you know, a mandatory site inspection. There's mandatory reviewing of certain documents. So that would follow through and follow through to this program if, once, you know, everything's worked out and enacted. And the compliance, our compliance department would be regularly monitoring them. One of the things would be is if you're going to say that this is a elderly care facility, we would validate that every year, the population you're servicing is the targeted population that the QC stipulates. The contract itself would say something along the lines of, you get this tax benefit from income received from operating this kind of facility, and it's only for this kind of facility. So if they go outside of the bounds, they're technically non-compliant with their certificate. And then they wouldn't be able to avail of any benefits for that year until they get good or, you know, like that. So yes, they will be, there will be regular annual compliance monitoring as a provision of their certificate.
Thank you. A question for Mr. Camacho. So you provided two potential ways to define affordable. Because HUD is different from USDA, do you recommend one of them? Or how would you resolve which definition to use?
Well, if you look at the legislation, the key word was "up to 115". So it's an all-in, both these programs are available. And the reason I say that is for the applicant that is going to use any of the HUD programs, you've got to meet the 80% air median income and below. For the tenant that's going to benefit for some of the voucher assistance, like some of the rental assistance, they're going to meet 50% air median income and below. So if you're going to build a facility and you want to use longer-term amortization, if you want, if a developer choose, because the developer can still choose a local bank with 20-year term, commercial bank. As you guys all know, the shorter the term, the faster you pay for your debt. But the higher the debt payments are, so your operational costs are higher. So the higher the amortization, the longer the amortization, your payments are a lot smaller. Thereby, your operational cost is a lot smaller. So at the end of the day, whatever your final targeted market is, it can be independent living, assisted living, or nursing care, whichever formula. The reason why we use the word, I'm glad you guys use the word "up to", because it catches both HUD's guidelines in regards to targeted income and catches USDA's 115% air median published, if you want to use some of USDA's funding. And I can, I'll disclose some of their programs. One of them is the 538 multifamily program that is used in the United States for elderly and affordable housing rental, rental program. Remember, this elderly is a rental program because they don't own it. So that's one of the programs, and they have to make sure that they meet, the Section 538 meets the, not to exceed the threshold of 115% air median income. Now, if a manomko wants to apply for some funds from HUD to get some voucher, they're going to meet the 50% to 60% air median income test. That catches that because the key word's "up to". Now, if HUD decides to provide some assistance leveraging CDBG, Community Development Block Grant, or HOME, you've got to meet the 80% air median income and below. There's all these resources that already exist in our toolbox here locally that a developer or a operator can leverage and educate its constituent base to go after or leverage a mixed-use financing with the tax benefits so that at the end of the day, hopefully, its operational costs and development costs will be a lot lower so that we could do our best to cover, to lower the cost to our manomko's that have fixed income. That's just my thought. That's just my opinion.
Yeah, great suggestions. Yes, Mrs. Viola.
So if I, if Matt and I were just discussing, it might, to simplify the language, it might be helpful to say HUD or USDA and let the developer pick the track that they decide on. Because what we find is when it comes to the federal funding, like when it comes to borrowing or utilizing the federal funds available, sometimes they move in two different directions. So we found times with USDA just really wasn't, it was not the funding source of choice. And then other times, and then as Carlos was mentioning, you also have the availability of CDBG. So CDBG, Community Development Block Grant money, that's actually grant money. But the grant money is oftentimes associated with the prevailing needs of a community. So if the community says, we want to bump elder housing to the top of that list, you have to make sure, then the developer will, developers will flock in to get the free money, which is the grant money, in addition to the borrowed money. Whereas if there's other priorities, building a fire station. Whereas if there's other priorities, building a fire station, a police station, et cetera, then there won't be that free money available, in which case they'll say, oh, we're going to use a combination of HUD financing and then any USDA to fill in the gap. So I would leave it open, open in as far as, make the definition expansive and so that you can say 115% of HUD or USDA. And then you let the developer pick the track that they're going to go down and then the approach they're going to take with regard to borrowing. Because we also don't know what the climate is. Right now, interest rates are going up, but the availability of tax credits, our federal tax credits, like the low-income housing tax credits, et cetera, those programs still exist. Those could change, Congress could authorize more in one area than another. So you want to make sure that your, Guam fits in to, because really, this bill is about further enhancing the appetite for a developer to choose to build elderly housing versus another type of project. So you want to make it more expansive than restrictive when it comes to the definitions.
Great. Thank you for those responses. There's another definition here, it's dwelling. So it states it shall be consistent with Section 61103J of the zoning law. And so basically, it includes any kind of dwelling except hotels. Would, you know, in line with what my colleague was asking, you know, we need this now, and would there be any impacts or implications if this definition was changed so that, that would allow for hotel conversions? So, because we're seeing a lot of vacancies, right, in some of these hotels, and perhaps they also need, you know, overhaul as well. Is there any implications to changing this definition to include a conversion?
My assumption with Senator would be that if, if a hotel were to be converted to a non-hotel purpose, it would need to be rezoned, and then it would no longer be a hotel. It would be zoned as multi-service property, a commercial property, or a multi-dwelling residential property. But if a hotel is going to be taken away from being a hotel and converted into a assisted living facility, it would no longer be considered under the zoning a hotel. I think if you wanted to put language in here that said something like, something specific that said, you know, a developer who purchases an existing hotel property and converts it to this facility shall be, shall be eligible to receive the benefit, you could certainly add that as a double, a double measure to make sure that they're eligible. And that would just sort of, it would, it would, it would be in harmony with the definition of dwelling, because you could say, a hotel or a hotel room converted into that, or a whole, because I don't know if you'd, yeah, I don't know if you'd want to take like a hotel and then like, it's a 100-room hotel, you turn 20 rooms into an elderly, and then 80 are still a hotel, and then there's different revenue for each, and then it's kind of hard for, to separate what is eligible under here versus there. Maybe if they took the whole facility and transformed it into a elderly, elderly housing of whatever eligible type, then that, that would make sense. Yeah.
I appreciate the responses. Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator Perez. Senator Brown.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Certainly thank you again to Gita and to Mr. Camacho for being here to provide your input with regards to this bill. I do have to commend the author for moving this bill forward in her introduction, because there's no doubt in our small island community, there's definitely a need for elderly housing. And the fact that she's also looking at proposing essentially a mix of elderly, because traditionally we've looked at it as almost institutionalized environments for elderly people to go to. But the opportunity to be independent, if that is where your, your health and activity level is, that that option is there, that there could be a mixed use between that versus those that require some assistance maybe in terms of their caretaking, and then maybe ultimately, we do have members of our community that require in some cases full care because of their, their overall health condition. You know, many years ago, and I think Carlos will remember this, back when Leo Palace was built, it's interesting that our Asian neighbors were actually looking far ahead in planning for how they were going to address accommodations for their elderly residents. And one of those plans included Guam in construction at the time of these facilities here. And at the time, Manengan was initially constructed, that was one of the ideas, actually have that facility or the facilities being built there also to accommodate members of their elderly community. We on Guam are a little behind with regards to that. Of course, traditionally, culturally, it would have almost been unheard of a generation or two ago, that you would not take care of your elderly parent, your grandparent, your great-grandparent. Normally, they were taken care of in the home unless health, health situations required further medical care that could not be tended to by the family. But nowadays, we have such a mixed situation. We have members, elderly members of our community, because of whatever reason, maybe economic opportunity, job opportunities, other children have moved off island, they live here, but their children, grandchildren, great-grandchildren are not here to provide that support for them. And then it's also trying to look at how can we address not just the physical housing of our elderly, but quality of life, that environments that can be created as they are in other jurisdictions where you can still in your senior years have a healthy, happy environment that you can live in and enjoy. And I think that's something we need to look at versus looking at getting older as, you know, the death sentence, so to speak. I have to say, I was listening on the radio this morning to Mayor Alec, where he was commenting how our senior, the senior centers are now open after this pandemic, and if you're 55 or older, you would qualify. And I thought, oh, my goodness. Carlos, we're falling, falling into that category, because you and I first met here 40 years ago when we were in youth leadership. And now, you know, you blink your eyes and the years go by, and here we are, and time goes by so quickly. But I wanted to ask you, Mr. Camacho, from your perspective, I mean, you've been so much involved for many years in the development of, at different levels of housing on Guam for different income levels, but I know your focus has primarily been on those that have needed the assistance, that otherwise may never be able to either afford a home or have a home that they can rent, or apartment that they can rent and call their own. So I wanted to get your feedback on what's your thoughts of this in terms of timeliness of, of this legislation? And perhaps do you think we've taken a bit too long to maybe get around to introducing such legislation in terms of what the demand is that you see out there?
Well, it's never too late, like I said. You know, when we first, just to give you a good example, when we first started the low-income housing tax credit program, that's been introduced in Congress in 1986 by the Internal Revenue Service Amendment of the Affordable Housing Act. That's 1986. We didn't get to implement that program in Guam until 2005, almost 20-some years later. But 20-some years later, today's 2000, that's 2005, today's 2022, we got over close to 1,000 units, and that's one of the saviors that saved, remember, I sat in the same body when everybody was looking at the old Lada estates, that it was a, we had a $10 million liability there and jungles were growing. I came over here and I said, there's one way to fix it, just change the law to allow the flexibility of a federal program. And I'm very fortunate at that time, Chairwoman of Housing, Senator Barnes at that time, rest his soul, Mr. Martin Beneventi, was his staff at that time, agreed and concurred. Well, we changed the law. Today, if you ever drive by Lada, three, exactly 399 units is being used by our, our low-to-low-income families that have got a roof over their heads. The rents are, if you guys understand low-income, the rents are capped based on their income. And that's one particular project that has an elderly set aside by GURA. But today, that has 399. There's a laundromat, there's a commercial center there, there's a swimming pool. That's my competitor, by the way, but I'm giving him all the accolades because he finally developed that program with a tax credit program. And a lot of people don't know, there's two, there's two tax credit allocations in Guam. One, we go through GURA through a competitive process every year, right? And that's how we built this. And the other one is administered by Gita. It's called the 4% tax credit. That's the one that's very difficult to do because our cost of goods is still high, it doesn't make financial sense. Doesn't make financial sense. And whenever we apply for that, that has to come back to this body for approval. So what if we, what if we take some of that program and layer into this one here to give it an incentive? Maybe Gita will say, we're, we're seeing 4%, which is a non-competitive tax credit, to say, why don't you layer in this with this? Because that gives you 30 cents of a dollar equity from the tax credit investment to help lower the cost further. But I'm not here to do the math for that. That should be, you know, later we can do a roundtable with Gita and Economic Development, Senator, to go after some of those programs. But it's, Senator, it's never too late. I just gave you an example, what was 1986, done in 2005, and robusting today in the Marion Islands. We've got over 1,000 units here. In CNMI, I introduced it in CNMI almost eight years ago, and today there's over 400 units there now in CNMI, under the tax credit. I still remember when I was going over there, when they were, they were telling me, Carlos, our tax basis is better than the tax policies you're going to introduce. I said, no, it's not, because this is money coming in from the IRS coming in. It's inbound money, not taking it away from your tax base. And I still remember my good old friend Doris Brooks, the OPA, used to call me, Carlos, are you going to hit into our, our cash flow in Guam, because you're going to sell the tax credit? I said, no, we're bringing in money from the IRS investors that qualify in the 50 states and territories. And I'm glad so far, there's no wood here to knock. That's, that's been working. And you see more and more of these tax credits being built. I didn't participate this year because I got a little health setback, and it was my colleague, well, I call him my colleague, although it's my competitor. Guam, you know, we're in America, he's doing over 150 units more and keeps adding. But that's targeted again towards, towards a program that just got adopted in 2005. But Senator, it's never too late. If, if we get this, we don't know what's going to happen. I know the million-dollar question is, okay, we know what it's going to cost to run an independent living, because we've got so many case studies in Guam. But what will it cost to run assisted living and nursing care? I know the task force, based on the article that I've been reading, saying it's going to cost anywhere from $4,000 to $8,000 a month. How is a manomko with this type of income base going to afford that? Well, I did a little, as I always do, I do a little research in the mainland, and how is that done? And it took a while. There are insurance policies that people buy into before they get into the elderly age, so that when they, when they retire, they also have an insurance policy that they can draw down. One of the other vehicles they use back there is called the reverse mortgage. You guys seen that in TV commercials, right? Reverse mortgage? It's so ironic, just a week ago, FHA HUD was in our conference room, GAR, I invited them to speak, the Guam Association Realtors. They provide reverse mortgages. Now, I didn't know what that meant, what is it for? And what that meant is there's a lot of, in the US, there's a lot of elderly people that have, living in three, four-bedroom homes, that now want to transition into an elderly housing, but they don't have the whereabouts to go there, so they do a reverse mortgage. Remember the reverse mortgage, to what I understand, they don't pay the debt, they get the equity out of the home so they can fund their last portion of their living quarters, let it be assisted or let it be nursing. At the end of the day, the reverse mortgage can be paid off later by its own kids or family member, when that time comes. I went to that exercise in California with one of my aunties, I understand how that program works. That's just one source. The insurance is one source. And ironically, and I'm getting off the topic, ironically, was it two weeks ago at the Hilton, there was a company coming to Guam to hire caregivers for the elderly population in the United States. And what he said in the news was, we come here to Guam because it's the character of the, of the community, it's the people from the Micronesian, the Western Pacific, that's that is a caregiving community. Imagine them flying all the way over here from Michigan to try to hire people so they can fulfill their caregiving needs back in the mainland. So I think we do have the foundation and the framework. I think we do have, I seen some multiple, at least in our local families who have six or seven members, you know, if they all help to put their, because they're all jumping their, their mom and dad around to babysit, you know, and all that. If they can put them in a very secure facility that they know that is either assisted or nursing, I think there will be the caregiving characteristics of our, our Micronesian families, our Chamora families, that will contribute to that. I don't have all the answers to that, but for some reason, it's successful, this elderly housing program, six of the mainland, so they must be programs I'm not aware of yet, but, because like I said, I'm not, I haven't done any of that development. But it will entice, this will entice intrupunal developers, maybe someone from the mainland that's done it to want to expand their operation out here. I don't know. But I know that in the, as you guys described, in the mainland, an elderly is considered 65 and above. In Guam, it's 55, so I'm already there. 55 and above.
Yes, 55 and above.
Yeah, 55 and above.
You can get a discounted rate at the movie theater.
Yeah, so, but at the end of the day, I think, I think with the small population and our culture, I think we're the right step, Senator. It may not happen overnight. You know, we still got to get the policy in place, we still got to get the rules and regs in place. And hopefully, we can entice, I mean, I remember when the Senator was building this QC law, I still remember when you guys had, under Joe Ada administration, they used to call it the birds, but it was the crane, the cranes, because they didn't have enough hotel rooms. So they created this incentive to entice developers, and that's what happened. I don't know what part of that is OKC or not. I mean, I've never done the hotel development, but I know it's a vehicle that worked for other stuff. I've seen you guys, I've seen Gita and you guys talk about other QC programs to create job opportunities, to create this. But this is for elderly. You know, how do we sustain something for them? Now, how do we solve the monthly operational expense? I think the QC would be one way to lower the cost, but after that, the other equation we have to figure out, or developer, or the families will have to figure out how that works. I, I have no answer for that at this point. But it's never too late to start. Never too late.
Well, I certainly appreciate your, your input as well, and certainly, you know, recognition is due you, Carlos. You've done a lot of work, like I said, to help a lot of families on this island, especially those that most in need of housing, be it, you know, like I said, to be able to own their own home and afford their own home, or be able to rent a good, safe home that they can, they can raise their family in. And that's definitely something over the years, I've seen you from such an early age, be focused on the work that you do and something you've done, it's been your lifelong investment, so I certainly appreciate. I know our people here in our community appreciate a lot of the work that you've done to help, help out our community. So thank you for that. And certainly for Gita, it sounds pretty much that once this, this bill can be put in place, maybe with some additional improvements to the bill, that this is something that you would have, you don't foresee any major challenges in being able to address the implementation of it from your end?
No, Senator, we see this being very similar to some of, we also have an affordable housing qualifying certificate, so we see the mechanics of running this program to be, be very similar.
Okay. Well, thank you, and again, thank you for your time and coming down today to, to join us for this public hearing. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the opportunity to ask questions and comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Brown. Senator Duñez.
Sidozmasi, Mr. Chairman. I just want to thank, of course, the guru of this, these type of programs, Mr. Carlos Camacho, for being with us today, as well as what I've come to see this morning as what I call the M&amp;M show. Mel and Matt, been doing a great job supporting these programs. I think all the salient questions were asked. Just wanted to share a story. A couple of years ago, when my mom was in her final years in Washington State, she actually was at a similar facility that's being discussed here. And what was interesting with the campus is it had both components of assisted living and nursing care. and nursing care for those who would, you know, require, you know, the full array of services, other than those who were still independent living. It was amazing, because the amenities were just so great. I mean, day, day areas, they had barbecue areas, picnic areas, I mean, just a really beautiful facility in a very dignified way to, to live. A relative of mine came to visit my mom, and he commented, he said, wow, I guess when I get to my final time, I might want to stay here, because it was just such a nice facility. There's also a church right down the street, so you could avail yourself in this entire community of everything that you would desire, faith-based and, and the like. So I think it's an idea whose time has certainly come, as many of our colleagues have spoken about in terms of the changing dynamics of our community, but also just the ability, you know, to, to have the ability to visit your family members and, and enjoy with them as well, in case you have that busy lifestyle like many of us do. But certainly, an idea's time has come, and I thank the author for proffering it. It's going to be exciting to watch the development of this, like I said, having experienced that firsthand. So one, one mention that I wanted to make was, other than this, the qualifying certificates and the like, one of the major supportive components to this was a very prominent and recognized Medicare and Medicaid type of administrator as well. Providence was, was really a big part of, you know, the care. And we know that many of our elderly and, and those of us who are quickly aging to that care to go, like myself, would be availing of, of those opportunities, you know, even, especially, even, even with lower incomes, some folks, of course, they have that, that, you know, that benefit. So I think that would support as well, you know, facilities such as this, outside of just the affordability. And so, look forward to seeing this under development, and thank you for all your work. Situs Masih, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Senator Duñez. Senator Titerwee?
Situs Masih, Mr. Chair. Thank you so much to Gita for being here, and I do look forward to sitting down and talking to you to strengthening this bill, to provide the intent of the legislation that you so support. But I think everyone is in agreement, this is a facility that we do need on this island in our growing aging population, most especially the baby boomers are already here and, and going into their 70s or 80s. So we definitely have to address that, and I will work with the committee chair, you know, on, on meeting with Gita to strengthen that. And to Carlos Camacho, I greatly appreciate all your hard work and the research you've done in, in this area. You've been so instrumental, again, and I, I can't thank you enough, but I, you actually had one of my closing statements, and that was about the company that came to Guam to, to seek out, you know, individuals to come work for them in another state. I mean, taking away our workforce here, when hopefully, we will have our own facility here, not just one, maybe several areas. So the, you know, I had the opportunity to visit at least two facilities in, in Hawaii when I was there, and I'm, actually, my sister knew the developer. And the story that she had told me about this developer was when he moved to Hawaii, his mother was with him, and his family, they all came together, and a lot of times, she would be at home by herself, you know, just sitting there by herself, and then if there was a caregiver that was there. But it got to a point, it was just a matter of having a caregiver there, it was about interacting with other people. It's about living, not just sitting in front of a TV, but interacting with, with other people their own age, you know, to talk to. That companionship, that's so important to the health of a Manamku, is that companionship. So he actually built a facility, because he couldn't find one in Hawaii that was sufficient enough and had all the amenities that is needed. And most especially, to maintain his mother in that same facility as she ages, as she gets older. So she went in as an independent, then she became assistant, needed the assistant living section of the facility, and then needed, again, it came down to nursing, where she passed. But it provided a place, you know, that was secure, and instead of uprooting our Manamku, you know, every time, they come into a different stage of their life. And many times on this island, we find that our, the Manamku that are here, their children have left to the mainland or to another, you know, off-island, somewhere else. And then they're left with, you need to come live with us now in the mainland. You know, I've, I've always hoped that I would be here, I lived my last twilight years here on this island, and not something that wasn't familiar. And that's what we're finding out now, what's happening today. Families that are in the States who, who want to take their parents off Guam, you know, and have them live there, and, or they can't come and leave their life in the States and come here to care for their parents. At least now, we can find peace of mind for everybody by creating this facility. And that's some of the many stories I hear from, you know, families who, who have their Manamku, or their parents are aging, their grandparents. So I think what the intent of this legislation is to ensure that facility allows the three parts of it, which is, you know, independent, assistant, and then nursing. Secondly, it's not just to build the facility, but also operations is involved, very much to be able to operate. I know there's several companies in Seattle or Washington State that do this type of services. In fact, that was the same company that flew to Hawaii after the developer built this facility. They hired this company to come in and operated. It became so popular that there are now four other facilities in Hawaii that house the senior living facility, and they even have a dementia section of the facility too, for those who have dementia. So there's definitely a need. I think we've been talking about these for a couple of years. I know there's a task force that is already in, in, in meetings right now, but I think this legislation now is the next stepping stone to move forward, to invite those individuals who are interested in developing a facility like this, or, as mentioned earlier from my colleague, using already an existing facility and renovating it, meeting the specifications needed for an individual in senior living, you know, everything from the wheelchair accessibility to the compliance of ADD, et cetera, down the line. So I can't stress enough how we have to move on this, because like I said, in 20, coming up 2030, we're going to be peaking. We will be peaking, our population is going to be considerably different, and that is moving more to those who are in our seniors. So we need to address this right away. So I thank you, Mr. Chair, and looking forward to the markup meeting on this, and trying to move forward as fast as we can, and ask Gita, as soon as you're done here, to start preparing those rules and regs or those ideas, because we'll be knocking on your door very, very soon here. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator Titerwee. If there are no further questions or comments, this concludes our discussions on Bill 259-36 LS. The committee will continue to accept written statements on today's hearing within 10 business days from today, which may be mailed to my office at 238 Archbishop Flores Street, Suite 906 of the DNA Building in Hagatia. You may also send your statements to us at clintridgell@guamlegislature.org. That's spelled C-L-Y-N-T-R-I-D-G-E-L-L at guamlegislature.org, or you can send it by fax to 475-4768. Thank you all for your participation this morning. This virtual public hearing is now adjourned at 11:40 a.m.